The United States of America. Intervent: [inaudible 00:01:10].
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those who make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Thank you, and welcome to the January 9th meeting of City Council. City Clerk?
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Belishko?
Here.
Mr. Maron?
Here.
Mrs. McClay?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Also in attendance is Mayor George Brown, Controller Tony Thomas, Administrator Charlie McCormick, Assistant City Attorney Maureen Collins, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, and Administrative Assistant Lisa Samphilippou. Good evening, welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five minutes speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. Chairperson shall determine all points of order. No persons except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of the administration are speaking, please stand up and use the microphone.
Before I begin, I'd like us to have a moment of silence for the fire in California and also for the National Day of Mourning for President Carter. Pending legislation, anyone like to speak on pending legislation? There's one agenda on the idiom, Mrs. Joseph, or Ms. Joseph.
First of all, thank you to Mr. Trimmingham for volunteering to give his time on the zoning board. It's wonderful to see his desire to be part of having a positive impact for Wilkes-Barre. Just a few thoughts as he becomes a member of the board, hopefully with your approval tonight. On Tuesday Chairman Brooks spoke about how important and serious the zoning board is, and they most definitely control our landscape in the downtown and in our neighborhoods. Something I feel is as important regarding zoning approvals is how we enforce and follow up on all those approvals that are given by the board. For businesses that submit requests and ask to locate in the areas of the city, do they adhere to the regulations put forth by the board upon approval of their request? So many places say they will follow the board's ruling, but then they disregard those rulings and allow other services to happen at their businesses. Examples are several auto repair shops, tire shops, the venue for the weddings and parties as mentioned on Tuesday by Mr. Brooks on Washington Street, apartment buildings that ignore the parking spot allowances. So ultimately, we end up in many cases just having our neighborhoods junked up. So just some information for Mr. Trimmingham in case, you know, when he gets on the board if he wants to look into some of that stuff. The only other thing is I wonder and curious is, is there the capability of the zoning board, once they make an approval, and if there are violations, can they remove and pull back the zoning approval on that? Just some thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Joseph. Excellent questions. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on pending legislation?
Tony?
Yes, sir.
Linda, I would believe it would be an appeal process after that, if they don't agree with it. If there's a problem, then it would be an appeal process, which that goes to the Court of Common Pleas if I'm not mistaken. Charlie would know that.
No, no, just getting him out of the way. No, it's okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Good.
I'm good. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments? Okay. Anyone else on pending legislation? Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll need a motion and a second on the consent agenda, which is the resolution appointing Stephen Trimmingham to the zoning hearing board, and the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
By Mr. Belishko, second by Mrs. McClay. Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mrs. McClay?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, council presentations. Councilman Belishko?
Just a couple things. Yesterday I spoke with the graffiti hotline department. One item. Today I need to speak to the pothole hotline department. 187, this department head, 187 Old River Road, pothole. The other item...
Was it graffiti or is it a street sign?
No, it's, I called the pothole line.
Call River Road. Okay. Okay.
The other thing, I'd like to wish my cohort, Councilman Bill Barrett, a happy birthday. Today's his birthday. Happy birthday.
[applause]. And finally, I want everyone to know this. Mark this down. Tonight Notre Dame 21, Penn State 17. I'm good.
Mr. 39-year-old Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, sir. I wish. You know, I just listened to what Linda just had to say about zoning, and I know, and we've all seen Mr. Harris, when it comes to light that there is a nonconformance with the zoning requirement, I know they do follow up on those, but I don't think they routinely go out and just look for it. But oftentimes, we come across zoning violations, and we know that there's been a zoning hearing on certain matters. So I do know they do follow up, and I do know that they're pretty stringent upon that once the board rules on something and they violate it. So, but it's good advice to, you know, if you make a ruling, follow up on it and make sure, just check on it, make sure it is being followed. But that's all I have since Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. How's our Maron?
I have one thing. Like, I think code enforcement and health department, they helped me with a couple blighted properties this past week, and I know it's an issue throughout the city, and they moved pretty promptly with it. I'd like to thank them and city administration as well. And I also have Notre Dame 35 and State 17.
There's a smart councilman.
I am a Michigan fan, though. And that's all I have.
Councilwoman McClay?
Right, guess who?
Notre Dame.
So I actually do have one thing, and it's not my area, it's Bill's area. The corner of Pearl and Scott Street, when you get that stop sign, you cannot see the stop sign coming from Scott down. Can we do a no parking from here to the telephone pole? I could send you a picture.
Yes.
I'll send you a picture, because you can't see the car that's waiting there at that stop sign as you're at the stop sign.
There's no traffic.
We get more traffic, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. And then, I think that's it. And thank you. Thank you for all your help. I did get a bunch of emails, so you guys work really fast. Thank you.
No prediction?
No predictions?
No.
There's a smart woman.
All right, so for me, you remember in kindergarten, we learned show and tell? I hate to do this.
Garbage picking.
All right, so this is in front of my house as I came over here, and also as I came over here, as I came up Ross Street, a gentleman wanted to turn right on Franklin Street, and he did, and he couldn't, but he did anyway. So obviously, this is a theme that continues to happen. When it comes to trash, all right, it's really tough stuff, because if you trash your own city that you live in, obviously you have no respect for yourself and the city that you live in. When I was a child, there was a wonderful commercial with a Native American who would cry about amount of trash that was in the rivers. That educational campaign needs to be done, and it can be done through us, through the city, through the media, through our school district, about respect. And if you throw trash on your street, if you throw your gum, if you throw your cigarette butt out your window, I guarantee you, there are two things on here, I know people threw out their window at my house, they weren't aiming at me, it was them not having respect for themselves. We need to encourage people to have respect, to love the city they live in, to make it as clean as it possibly can, right? And I encourage us to do that. And hopefully, maybe we can all work together with the school board and other municipalities in the Wyoming Valley to teach respect for ourselves so we don't trash our own place. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Turn down here. See the button.
Okay, Penn State 35.
There you go.
How to get it in, right? How to get it in. Notre Dame 10. Adding to what you're talking about, Councilman, a couple other things are the reason why we have trash in the city. One is, it might be a holiday, and we put the word out, it's a holiday, we're not collecting recycling today, and guess what? People put the trash, and you know this, Linda, you and I have talked about this, people put the recycling out anyway, and then it blows all over. Also, it might be overstuffed cans where we get some wind and it gets blown out, but I mean, last week when it was the trash day and recycling day for plastics and stuff, okay, they were blowing all over because a lot of them were overstuffed, but also it was windy. So there's several things that accumulate the trash, not just people throwing it out. You're right, Tony, it is, it is people throwing it out also, but also I'd have to ask people that if in front of your residence, there's some things, try to pick them up, okay? I mean, because I know even my house, my stuff will blow, but I'll go out there picking it up. I had a meeting with Rob Sliker today about as the weather opens up a little bit and it gets nicer out, we're going to do a very, very heavy street sweeping effort throughout the city. We're also going to do a very, very heavy, and Lisa, get ready for this, pothole patching initiative. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Lisa, we patched over 500 potholes last year with the new machine we have, it's a permanent patching machine. So we did over 500 last year, if I'm not mistaken. We're going to be very aggressive, and as Lisa gets the calls from council or the people, we set up a hotline. Call Lisa with potholes, call Lisa with graffiti, and call Lisa with signs that you may need to get replaced.
This is Colleen.
Mike, there is something else you want to be there. She's got more time. Anyway, please, it's published, we have a number, you can call Lisa, she wants to take on more. She says to me every day, Mayor, give me more to, what can I do? Give me more to do. So we're doing that. But seriously, we do have hotlines set up, that we will address them, and most of the time in a nice weather. Now, the other thing about graffiti is, we talked about the ordinance that was put into effect back in 1995, and we talked about graffiti, and it's the owner of the building that's responsible for removing the graffiti, it's not the city, it's the owner of the building. But in fairness, as we're getting reports of graffiti, and I spoke to Councilman Maron about this today, it has to be nice enough weather to remove it. I mean, let's be realistic, you're not going to go out in 15-degree temperatures and wash down the graffiti. So we're going to address that very intently once the weather opens up a little bit. We have letters already that we crafted to put out there, okay? So we're going to address it. Problematic properties, we're addressing heavily, so we're doing our best, but I ask the residents that are here, work with us, report things that are out there that should be reported. Council members, report these things to Lisa, and then we'll start chipping away. The weather's been really tough, though, lately, but we're going to get on it, okay? I don't know if, did I tell you Penn State 35?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public discussion. Michael Martin?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want you to know, I'm not very good at it.
Please state your name for, I'm sorry, for the record and where you live.
Michael Martin. I'm not great at public speaking, but I'm going to do my best here. The reason why I'm here is because I am, I'm here about 219 South Washington Street. It is known as the downtown art and event space. Over the past couple of months, we have had to make about 19 calls to the police about excessive noise, usually on Friday, Saturday night. They are zoned to be open 11:00 p.m. weekdays and 2:00 a.m. weekends. Unfortunately, there are times that they have gone well past that, especially on the weekends. A lot of times after that, they'll have a lot of issues with them in the alleyway, they'll be drinking, they'll be screaming, and carrying on. It's kind of obnoxious. In the back of their, of their building, which is a shared alleyway between our building and theirs, they have a bunch of garbage that's been piling up. Rodents have been ripping into the garbage bags, it's just, during the summer, it got so bad that there were bugs all over the place. They had these, these canisters up against our building, and the problem was that bugs were then getting into our apartment on the third floor. It got so bad that we actually had to speak to our landlord, he asked them to move the garbage cans, and we had to bug bomb the house, and we had to, we went away for about a week. We just went up to the hotel in Wilkes-Barre Township. On 11/16, we had an issue with somebody that was a guest from their venue, they were hiding in the alleyway. We have no idea what they were doing, but they were intoxicated. Scared us as we were coming by, there was just no light, nothing. We have no idea what he was doing there. We have a number of documents here about the number of times that we've called, we have pictures of everything that's been going on, the canisters. We did try resolving the matter with her, she informed us that we could pay her landlord to soundproof the building. This is just, it's, there's just so much here. I would like to give this to you, I don't know what the proper procedure is for that. But that's really all I have to say on that subject.
You want a copy?
No, I don't need a copy.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Tony.
Yeah, I'm a cup, or me. Mr. Martin, I believe that peace and quiet is a constitutional right. You should live in your house in peace and quiet. Nobody should ever disturb you. Neighbors should never disturb other, other people. And so I'm so sorry at what you're going through, particularly what I just heard now, it's unconscionable that you had to rent a hotel to live out of your place. How long was that rental for? A week. I'm very sorry that that has happened.
If I may, there was people outside your venue with bulletproof vests on as well.
Okay. And the fact that, that the, was it the owner of that venue said to go soundproof your apartment or have your, unacceptable also. We will look into it. I know we mentioned this on council on Thursday, I understand the city is going to look into it, and we will resolve your problems so you can live in peace and quiet. Thank you for coming. Next, Laura Panero. Hi, Laura.
Yeah, my name is Laura Panero, and I live in Durie. The reason why I'm here is because a couple months ago, back in October, the Wilkes-Barre City Police unalived someone during the, during an incident, they were called, his name was Omar Redditt, and they were called to his house according to the newspaper article, they were called to, police were called there on a domestic violence, they were called to his ex-wife's house on a domestic violence. And what happened was, things transpired between him and the police, and they unalived him. So they shot him. So we, I requested body cam footage of the incident, I put it in Act 22 request, and it was denied. So when it's denied, you have to file a petition for judicial review. So I did that. It's in the Court of Common Pleas. So far, two judges have recused themselves from hearing it, so I'm still waiting to see what happens with it in court. But I'm here just to ask for support for the petition for judicial review, someone on the council or all of you or something, for the release of the body cam footage of the incident, because it's a pretty serious incident. Somebody lost their life, he was a member of the community, he was a father and a grandfather, he mattered to his family, and I mean, it's just, it seems kind of disrespectful in a way to just sort of brush over the incident and not release the footage to the public. Plus, release of body cam footage, it helps with trust in the police, it helps with police accountability, things like that. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Panero. Any comments from council or administration? Do they know about this? Okay, so, got it. Okay. Linda Joseph?
On Tuesday, Councilman Maron brought up the situation at the former Stanton Bowling Lanes and the dangerous dilapidated eyesore that it has become. The building was given zoning approval back in June of 2021 to Mount Zion Baptist Church, who purchased the building for $800,000. According to the article in The Times Leader, the Reverend stated that they plan to close on the building by August of 2021 and begin renovations to convert it to a church and community center within three to six months. It is now 2025, and we are coming up on four years since the approval, and nothing has happened. Actually, the deterioration of the building has become worse. So in regards to zoning, is there any type of time limit on action being taken after receiving zoning board approval? If not, then it is currently a seriously blighted property. In addition to that, the towing company that only owns the property at 441 Moy Allen Street has taken over the entire back of the Stanton Lane property on Moy Allen Street with every type of vehicle imaginable, as well as portions of the front of the bowling alley. Also, a few weeks ago, the police found several children in one of the tractor trailers on that property and had to remove them. The owner had promised over a year ago to cover what is actually now a salvage yard. He only covered the South Empire Street side, nothing on the Moy Allen Street side. The entire area looks really so bad. Stanton Street is a heavily traveled street, and especially from residents in the Heights, Mayflower, and Rowley Mill Hill areas. It's absolutely a quality of life issue for residents, especially those living near that building. Just citing the church, for whatever reason, isn't changing the situation as it exists. So have there been conversations with the church as to their plans, or have they just abandoned the property? Again, it is an eyesore and an embarrassment to the neighborhood and the city, as is the extreme accumulation of vehicles that they are allowing on their property by the business owner at 441 Moy Allen Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maron, for bringing this up in the pictures.
Charlie has something to say. He has some answers for you. Thank you so much for your concern as well. I appreciate it.
The owner has been sent the appropriate letter, basically we call it repair or remove. There's certain periods of time within which they have to resolve that. They also will be getting a letter from the reworked, when it's out, ready to go, the graffiti letter, because there is some graffiti on, and the truck company owner has been contacted, has moved, my understanding, or is in the process of moving all of those trucks. So hopefully, some, there'll be some movement on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Corry.
Yeah, thank you.
Any comments else? Thank you. Madeline Chappell, or Capel?
Madeline Chappell, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. Am I speaking appropriately into the microphone?
Yep, and I'm sorry for speaking in French.
That's entirely fine, it is a common misspeaking of my name. On December 19th, 2024, I came before this council to speak on the idea of a potential trans sanctuary bill similar to a resolution passed in State College Center County. I wanted to speak today to follow up on that previous sort of introduction of potential legislation, that seeking of sponsorship. As, you know, as a trans woman myself, I do find the matter hits rather close to home, you know, the idea of being denied healthcare, being denied, you know, inability to live my life as best I can, you know, denied to, you know, the life, the liberty, the pursuit of happiness that the Constitution or the Declaration of Independence supposedly promises for each American citizen, I forget which, I admit. And we know for a fact that the current presidential administration, or at the very least the people he's appointed, are willing to pass policy without regard for the people they impact. We've seen it with the overturning of Roe versus Wade, and the numerous women that have been denied healthcare, not even directly related to abortion, just life-saving care because they were worried about the viability of the fetus, and that led to several women dying, being denied, you know, life-saving care. And in a controversial move, I'm going to borrow a line from the NRA, bans don't stop anything, and they don't. All they're going to do is prevent proper regulation of what's happening. Trans individuals are going to pursue HRT because it is a way to help them be their true selves, it's going to help them pursue that happiness, live the life they want to. And all banning that healthcare is going to do is it's going to drive them to less secure methods of potentially tainted hormones, and if they aren't allowed that access, it's either going to kill them directly if they're already on HRT, or it's going to kill them indirectly if the gender dysphoria impacts their mental state to the point of suicide. I make this petition not just because it impacts me, but because it impacts citizens of Wilkes-Barre, and I care enough about this city and the community they're in to vouch on their behalf. Thank you for listening.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Madeline. As a member of the LGBTQ community, I'm very proud, I'm so glad you came here, because I'm so proud to say how Wilkes-Barre already has protections in place for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We passed an ordinance back in 2016 that provides for such things. We have a Human Relations Commission and an LGBTQ person who is a liaison to the community. Our city can, our city attorney here can explain some more if you'd like about the differences between an ordinance and a resolution.
If I may, Council Chair, may I have a copy of this ordinance?
Yep.
This legislation passed? I remember such legislation being mentioned December 19th, and I want to ensure that I have like evidence of it, that way...
Sure. So it's on our city website, so first thing you'll see when you go to the Human Relations Commission part of the website, and we have it printed out here, I'll give you a copy too.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
This isn't the full ordinance, but we can go to the website.
Right. So explain how ordinance is better than a resolution.
Yeah. And ma'am, just so you understand too, this ordinance, this is, has a lot more teeth than what a resolution would do. This actually allows a person from the LGBTQ community, if they feel like they, you know, have been discriminated against, or if they have a complaint, they can make a formal complaint to this commission. If it has merit, it will go through an investigation process and, you know, be fully, you know, adjudicated through that process.
A couple things, thank you for addressing me as ma'am. I would appreciate a printout of the ordinance just to ensure that, you know, I can spread the Lord of His existence and further speakings like this, further, apparently redundant speakings like this become less common.
Right.
Especially if there are already protections in place for the administration of HRT.
Yeah, so you can go to the city's website and find a copy of that ordinance on the website.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments from City Council?
Nope.
Good. Mr. Controller, any comments from Mr. Controller?
No, or me, my sex.
The mayor? Good.
Good boy, Tony. Very good. All right, you are Controller.
That's right. Okay, let's go Penn State. All right. Motion to adjourn. Good. Thank you, everyone, we'll see you at next council meeting. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you at next council meeting. Were you watching?
If it's not too crowded. Maybe, maybe you'll throw. Or maybe I'm hard.